Okay, welcome everyone. This is a meeting of the Pecoson City Council from Monday, February 25th. And if we could all rise, I'll have the invitation, Legion of Bloods and Legions. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received in our city. As we move forward on the various issues this evening, guide us. As we serve the community in the coming days, strengthen us to do what is right. And Lord, we especially ask that we stay mindful of those in need. Tonight again, we ask for your blessing and presence, that it be felt by those who serve our country, as well as our public safety employees who serve our nation, state, and city. Guide and protect them and bring comfort to their families as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're pleased this evening to start the meeting off with special recognitions. And this is a special recognition of a very important element of our city, and that's our long-term employees. And then the future of our city, Randy's going to introduce a couple of the new employees. If I could get counsel to, I'd like us to go in front of the dais here and shake the hands as they are introduced.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Recently, we had a luncheon to commemorate and memorialize almost 325 years of service by 21 individuals who are hitting their 5, 10, or excuse me, 10, 15, 20-year mark with us, and one at 37, who has his own story. Some of those people are here, and I thought if I could, I would call the names of all the persons, what department, and if you're here, if you would come forward, please. So, with 10 years of service, Sherry Coffey from our Community Development Department, Lisa Turner from the Police Department, Wayne Marlowe from the Police Department, Krista Corbett from the Fire Department, Charles Downing from the Fire Department, Darryl Griffiths with the Fire Department, Darlene Harris with the Fire Department, Noel Hernandez with Public Works, and Joyce Hardaway from the Library. I think Joyce is, are you here?
She's not here.
She's not here, okay. With 15 years, Robert Farrenhold, Police Department, Wayne McFarlane, Fire Department, Doug Montgomery, Public Works, Helen Heck, Library. Oh, Helen's here. And Marie Harden also with the Library. I would note, as Marie comes forward, that with our three Library folks tonight, we have 40 years' worth of part-time service to our community. Full-time service as a part-time employee, maybe that's better to say. That's quite remarkable. Celebrating 20 years of service, Tom Canelo with the Fire Department, John Ellis with Public Works, and Mark Lacks with Public Works. And this is where we get into the severe tenure group. Celebrating their 25th year with the city, Vicki Diggs. Celebrating 35 years with the city, almost as long as we've been a city, Suzanne Freeman with the Treasurer's Office, didn't see her before, and Percy Ward with Police Department. And last but not least on this particular list, celebrating 37 years, because he didn't want us to celebrate the 35 when it came up, because we were in the midst of some severe budget problems, and there was just more stuff to do than take time to celebrate it, is Robert Holloway, who truly has been with us almost as long as we've been a city. And these 21 employees together have 322 years of service with our city, and they're the kinds of people that we couldn't do without. And so I'm hoping that they'll all stay and do another 322 years. Especially, especially Robert. And also, take advantage of the fact council members that are up, we have two new employees today, and they're both here, Nicholas Allen and Corey Archer. If you gentlemen will come forward. You're new with our fire rescue corps. Thank you, gentlemen. You're more than welcome to stay, and if you choose not to, we will not be offended.
All right, Randy, thank you for that. As always, it's important that we recognize those employees that have done, pretty much have made this city. And we're a great city, and it's because of those very people that we just, that you just mentioned, and the new ones that will take their places in the many, in the coming Now's the time for audience for visitors. If anybody would like to address counsel on any issue, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask for the approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of a regular meeting of February 11th, 2013.
Second. Motion made in second that we adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of February 11th. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Now we're under F, which is Items Under New Business, and the first is a request by the Pecoson Yacht Club for a reappropriation of funds. And Randy, you want to give us the background on this?
Mr. Mayor, I would be pleased to set the stage for this discussion. As council members will recall, two years ago, we began, or it could have been three, changed the way we had done the Seafood Festival Workboat Race, to move towards a partnership in the endeavor with the yacht club. Two years ago, the City Council allocated $7,500 in addition to the basic budget that they'd had each year, which is essentially fundraising minus expenses. And that $7,500 was for the purpose of increasing the payout to the winner of the various races. That was reduced with the last year's budget to $5,000. And with this particular race that we just concluded last October, the yacht club is asking your consideration to appropriate, to carry forward, appropriating and carry forward approximately $3,600, which was the net between the money that they raised and the money that they spent, exclusive of the $5,000 that was dedicated to the prize money. Crosby Forrest is here, and I think you're going to speak, Mr. Forrest. Perfect time to come forward.
I'm Crosby Forrest. Henry Freeman is joining me. And Henry and I have been the co-coordinators of the Seafood Festival Workboat Race now, ever since the yacht club assumed the race in 2009. Prior to that, I had been coordinating what was called the Smith Island Skiffs at the existing race. And in 2009, when I was seeking a date to coordinate with those folks, I learned that there would be no race that year. So Henry and I quickly got together and says, hey, can we take it on as a yacht club event and continue the tradition of a Seafood Festival Workboat Race? And we did. So we've been, as Randy stated, we've been doing so since 2009. 2012, we found that our fundraising efforts were extremely good, and we ended up with a surplus. And as Mr. Wheeler stated, the surplus was in addition to the $5,000, or exclusive of the $5,000 that you guys appropriated, and you stated that that had to go to the racers as prize money. In addition to that $5,000, since we had a banner year of soliciting funds from sponsorships, not from any, from sales, but from sponsors, community businesses, non-community businesses, we augmented that $5,000 with another $2,730. So last year, we actually awarded the wardman, you know, $7,730 to the racers, and we had an appropriation, you know, so much for a win, so much for a second, so much for a third, on through the number of races that we had. In total, last year, the event raised $17,775, and this gets into Randy's numbers that he spoke of, which is inclusive of the $5,000. And we expensed $14,173, which leaves the surplus of $3,602. When the yacht club took on this project, and even last year as we were discussing it, there was a discussion as to who maintains custody of the funds. The yacht club did not want to remain in custody of the funds, because we wanted to be a host of the club for the benefit of the city of the Pecoson. We didn't want various organizations writing checks to the Pecoson Yacht Club. We wanted them to come to the city of Pecoson, through the Parks and Recreation Department, as it had always taken place, and then we would expense out of that account. And up until 2012, we either made a couple hundred dollars or we lost a couple hundred dollars. But as we said, in 2012 was a banner year, and now we're really in gear, we have our mailing list, we know how to run this thing, we're hoping to do about the same thing this year. So what we would like to do with that $3,600 is three things. Number one, we'd like to go out and spend some money on some of the infrastructure items. In the past, we've had small gillnet buoys used as markers for the race. Now we want to go out and buy, you know, some of the larger four-foot-wide markers, so it's more obvious to the wardman where the start and finish line is. And yes, last year, we had one controversy due to that issue, so we're straightening that up. Additionally, we would like to return the funds to a couple of the organizations that are local charities that have been donating, you know, $500. So we'd like to return the money to those charities. So we're going to return some of the money to the charities, and we'd like to retain the rest of it as seed money for 2012. But the primary reason we're here is the fundraising efforts to the community organizations have been so successful, we ended up in surplus, so that was a good problem. But since it's in city coffers and not the yacht club coffers, you know, we need to have it transferred from fiscal year 2012 into fiscal year 2013, so that we can expend it.
So that doesn't go into the unappropriated fund balance?
Yeah.
Right, was where it resides right now. And the request is to appropriate it in fiscal year 13, which is what we're in, and then carry over any unused portion of that in 14. It's a two-piece request.
Question?
Yep. And I think you two just had some conversation that might clarify. I have to admit, I'm very borderline on my vote on this, because I don't really understand the benefit versus not doing this. It's my understanding that if we don't do this, then the $3,600 stays on the book. So if the city is able to come up with, for $5,000 for next year, like we did the past year, that the city would only have to come up with a $1,400 difference, because this money would show as a surplus. Is that, am I making sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And so I'm not sure whether, where I see the benefit for the taxpayer. Help me out there, please, because I am borderline on this.
Well, benefits to the taxpayer, you know, that's a difficult question, but basically what I would say, my initial reaction to your question would be, you know, these are funds that civic organizations donated to the community for explicit use of the Seafood Festival Workboat Race. So we're basically asking that those funds be returned to the Seafood Festival Workboat Race for reuse. Additionally, we talked, and I think we spoke with Mayor Hunt and City Manager Wheeler, depending on how the fundraising goes this year, as we get into it, we'd like to attract more Chesapeake Bay-style workboats. If you look around the community now, and you see what's out there and what the workmen are using, a lot of them are using, you know, Carolina skiffs as smaller boats. So what we want to do, fundraising is sufficient, is be able to entice wardmen from beyond the Pecoson waters to bring the Chesapeake Bay-style workboats into the race, so it turns into more of a Chesapeake Bay-style race. But I see this, Mr. Southall, as a return of the funds that the community donated for explicit use of the workboat race.
Okay, I understand. I would be supportive of boat races again this year, okay? And I was seeing that the money was going to be returned. The only difference is, the city would only have to come up with a difference of $1,400 to produce that $5,000 seed money versus $5,000.
But we would have taken private investment, private funds to have put in our coffers. I think one thing that's probably missing here is the deep discussion of the relationship and the MOU between us and the yacht club in working this race. I think very clearly, we would not have had a race for now three years had y'all not stepped in. That MOA that we set up, basically, the yacht club's concern was that they didn't want to be seen as taking city money into their coffers and then making independent decisions on it. They could have easily, just as easily, taken the money that we had given them and put it in the Pecoson Yacht Club coffers, but they wanted to keep everything above board and visible to the citizens. So now they've gone out and they've gotten individual citizens and other charities to actually put money towards the Seafood Festival Workboat Race. And my fear is that if we somehow take that money and put it in our coffers, it'll make it very difficult for them to go and approach those people again to help sponsor this race. This isn't something of a profit-loss thing, because if you did that, we wouldn't have a Pecoson Seafood Festival. That is a, a year's a tremendous loss leader. We wouldn't have a fishing tournament. Many years, that's a tremendous loss leader, even for the organizations that put it on. So the question clearly is, do we want to reappropriate this? And it still may be that, based on next year's budget, we only appropriate $1,400 more dollars. Or it could be that, you know, we consider the $5,000 investment to be something that we want to continue the workboat race, or we don't.
Okay. What I don't understand, was that $5,000 tax money to start with?
Yes, sir.
And if it was, I don't understand about how we taking it from a charity organization. Can y'all clear that?
Well, the $5,000 to the racers was city money. And that was cash money that was given to us that weekend, of which then we had an accounting document that we had the racers sign to receipt of that $5,000. And then in addition to that, we, last year, we augmented it by another $2,730, so we actually gave the wardman very close to it, to $8,000.
And so then after you'd basically put out $7,700, the city got $3,600 back in the coffers. Is that correct?
We maintained $3,600.
Maintained $3,000. Maintained $3,600. It was always in your coffers.
Because we wrote all the checks.
Yeah.
Well, it depends on, Carrie, I mean, it really depends over the view that in the first year, we paid cash, we paid tax dollars for the first stand-up of it, tax dollars. Now, they've raised more than those tax dollars for the second stand-up. So it's clearly kind of a vote of whether you want to have one of these or not.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Say again?
If I could, just pause this for a second. The $3,600 you're talking about, $1,600 going back basically to buy your, the buoys, honorariums, things like that, the $2,000 is for fuel reimbursement, is that to bring other boats in? Is that what that?
That's what we're, that's what we're hoping.
Do you think that is really a driving force to get those guys in here? Are they running out here for pride?
Well, we're hoping it'll be a driving force. I mean, it's yet untried, but, you know, if a worker were to bring his boat from Gloucester someplace, you know, it's going to cost him, you know, close to $100 just to get here. Then if he races and he doesn't win, then he goes home empty-handed. If we go that route, and that's an option depending on fundraising, Mr. Ayer, we will put the stipulation on that payment, is that they would participate in the parade of sale prior to the race, and they would participate in at least one race of the race day activities.
That's my concern, is the guys come out there, get to $100 bucks, and just sit on the pier and watch the race.
No, we're placing contingencies on the payment of that $100, or whatever it may be.
All right, and then the last question, without that $3,600, is the boat race in jeopardy?
Say that again.
Without that $3,600, is the boat race in jeopardy?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2013, 14.
Because right now, we're discussing something without a motion. Is there a second for that? Second. Okay, a motion made in second that we appropriate the money. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, now, is there further discussion?
I think one of the important things is, Mr. Mayor, is that none of this money is going to the yacht club. It's going to infrastructure for the race to improve that and to entice the Chesapeake Bay-style boats to come here and race. Well, a little more discussion, as I said, I was very on defense on this, but if the boat races are in jeopardy, I think that's important, because the boat races, I think, are an important part of the city. We are a water town, and we pride ourselves on the water. And so, I had some points made more clear to me.
Just as a point of reference, I know there's a couple of different factions on this boat race. I'd like to see everybody pull together. I know there's other folks that have been involved in the past, and I think if we take the best and the brightest of what we have to offer with the two factions, as it being, we could really have one heck of a workboat race, probably the biggest on the East Coast, to maybe even match Harbor Fest. I'd like to see, really, think about, you know, call all our resources together. I'm concerned about the $2,000 fuel reimbursement, but as long as y'all have stipulations in there, they have to meet certain criteria before they qualify for that money. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Anything else?
I would like to see, you were talking about didn't want to take city money, I'd like to see us slowly migrate totally away from, and y'all be able to operate a boat race roughly on your own with no city money involved. I think that would be ideal, personally.
Looks like you're heading that direction.
We are slowly, maybe.
Okay, motion made in seconded, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Resolution approving the amended Parks and Rec Advisory Board bylaws.
Mr. Mayor, I report you, Marson, for those changes to the bylaws, the Parks Board, put these together for you. They are largely in charge of creating and maintaining their own bylaws. They are here for your concurrence. There are several housekeeping types of things, but they also talk about quorum requirements. They talk about a procedure over the years to move the chairmanship from one to the other. Gretchen, who's here, is the lead staff to the Parks Board these days. Gretchen, would you like to come forward and highlight anything I may have missed?
You don't feel like you have to. We have, I think what I'm reading here is that the Pecoson Parks and Recreation Advisory Board unanimously adopted their bylaws, and they're just asking for our approval.
You're the final rubber stamp for this to occur. Their main issue is to minimize their quorum from, with a total of non-voting members, down to, was originally six, and since that's more than 50%, we asked for a 50% quorum of five. That will allow for even attendance issues to help proceed with business.
Right, keep business rolling.
And our new chairman, recently elected for 2013, who's here, is Deb Banton. So she's here. If you'd like to speak with her, too.
No stranger to public service?
No, we're very fortunate, very fortunate to have her with us.
Debbie likes to, or we continue to just put her on stuff, either for spite or whatever, but she does a great.
I would like to keep her, so I'm not going to loan her out to anyone else.
She does a great job, no matter where she goes, so we appreciate that. Is there a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the revised bylaws of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board with some corrections, just typographical or clerical. On Article Four, under Membership, Section Three, in the, let's see, one, two, three, in the fourth sentence, where it says, "More than three unexcused absences," I think that "in" was meant to be struck, so that it's "absences during a 12-month period." And then in the very next sentence, I think the "should" should be struck, so that it says, "In the event of such occurrence." Because that "should" kind of doesn't make much sense. And I have one question about Article Three. Is that basically saying that the Director of Parks and Recreation is not supervised by the Board? Is that what that's intended to say?
That's correct. Parks Recreation Director is supervised by City Manager.
Right, okay, all right.
Questions or comments? A motion made and seconded, I believe.
One second.
Oh, second.
Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. The next item under New Business is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into aerial spraying agreement for 2013 and 2014.
Mr. Mayor, Jerry Kegel is here, and I'll bring him up in a minute if you have questions. Jerry is our point person with mosquito control. He is in charge of the things that we do here in the city, from cleaning drainage ways to treating fields, to spray from trucks. He's also our liaison with the Air Force on this issue, and he and Ellen Roberts together are responsible for the portions of the forms that you have that are actually filled in by us. The rest of the forms come from the military. This is before you, in largest measure, because while we've participated in this program for years, this is the first time that we've ever been asked to sign a form that looked like this. It's substantial, I think it reflects a different approach to the structure in which this program happens with the Air Force, not so much a different approach to the actual application of the process, but the form in which it occurs. There is a liability waiver that we're asked to sign as part of the participation, and that's certainly got me to question whether or not that was within my authority. I assaulted with Wayne, who concurred with me that it was beyond my authority, City Manager, to sign that sort of comprehensive liability waiver. And if I could, I did earlier today have a chance to speak with Mrs. Crawford. Regrettably, she's got a family issue that she had to deal with this evening, but she did have two comments that she would ask you all to consider. First, a specific comment with regard to Page Six, numbered Page Six of the application. Numbered Page Six, Section 15, is a six-line response, which, so you don't have to flip through it, I'll just read it to you unless you've got it. "Pecoson is a low-lying coastal community with a maximum elevation of approximately 11 feet above sea level. Over half of the city's landmass is comprised of tidal and non-tidal wetlands that can serve as mosquito breeding environments. Equine, encephalitis, and other mosquito-borne illnesses, illness outbreaks have occurred in the region, and a limited use of aerial spraying is necessary to ensure public health. She requests that you consider striking Sentence Three, that is, the sentence that begins with the word 'equine.' She would also observe that, in her opinion, the potential negatives associated with aerial spraying outweigh the potential positives, in her view, and asks me to convey that to you." And we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Jerry, would you like to come up and talk for a minute? Let me tell you, first, I thought you might have been here for, the employees that had been here for 37 years, okay? Because it seems like you've been here forever. But one thing about it is, and I don't want to ever let an opportunity like this go by, what your department does, people just don't really understand how much of a service you do to them. do to them. I mean, and not only from the mosquito control aspect that makes Pecosin a livable place, because, believe me, when I was a young man, it was not the same Pecosin that we live in today. But also from a tidal flooding perspective, the way that you maintain the drainage structures in this city and the things that you do to improve the drainage overall, in control of mosquitoes, as well as your primary oversight in that way, is such a service to everybody that I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you on behalf of all our guys back at work, so they do a good job. Is there any questions that you guys want? I think this is something new. It started last year. I think the aerial spray flight will continue only DOD services, which is Fort Eus, Slingley, and Cranny Island. They will continue to spray, because that's their primary function, is to come in and spray Langley and to do the adjoining areas that help them. This last year, they actually, I don't know exactly what happened, if it was through all the laws that are coming down, they made some changes. And one of the changes was, the only way that we could get sprayed was to, we had, it's the same application, we had to apply to Pentagon to, with this application, to be able to continue. And I think that's one of the reasons I talked to one of my gentlemen out at Langley. He said that was the whole harmless agreement was the one that the DOD had actually made up for this specific flights. So you have, and we have, their fiscal year goes from October to October, which is military. So we're actually applying for this one in a fiscal year to try to get it in. And you have to keep applying every year. So that's why we were going to do it for 2013 and for 2014, to get it ready for next year, too. And then each year, you have to do it.
And just because we're applying doesn't mean that a flight would be necessary.
No, no.
Right?
We typically, we usually look at the tide charts from year to year, and based upon that, we usually set up three times a year that we would like to see them, based upon the tide charts and the moon, you know, with the high tide, seeing with the high tide. So we typically set that, we call, you know, Ohio, they call Ohio and say, we want to set these dates up. Those dates are penciled in, so to speak, but we can get dropped at any time, because the planes that actually does the flying, it's actually a training mission for them. They come down here, they fly, they can't fly nowhere else in the world at 300 miles an hour, 150 feet off the ground in a populated area. So they use it for training, they really let it come to train, but they use it for other countries and the rest of the United States. So we can get bumped at any time, we can always opt out at any time. Just because we signed the paper doesn't mean we have to get sprayed.
And as I recall, when you and I met, this was probably two years ago, when we met with the gentleman at Langley who coordinated this, I tell you, that's a learning experience to listen to him. As I recall, he was a certified beekeeper.
Right, he was.
And head of the Colonial Bee Association. So, you know, we get all this churn in the press about mosquito spray and aerial spray, and he was able to bring it right home with concentrations. I'd actually like him to give that briefing to council one time. If you can set that up in the future. He was a, it was a tremendous amount of information, and I just think it's worthwhile for us to deal in facts instead of the paper and, you know, it's somebody's concern, but the facts of the matter and the chemical they use and the way that it's dispersed and that the concentration of dispersion, as I recall, was like one-tenth of the level of what could be applied. And yet, they were still, because of the science that they had involved in it, it was very functional at that time, which is why you're talking about the tides and the moon. So it was really incredible, and I would certainly like you to set that up if you can get that chance, Jerry.
Okay. I can do that, though.
Okay.
I could just reiterate a point that you made before. Even if we're signed up for this and you authorize it, we make a decision, Jerry and I, and Jerry in concert with others, on whether or not it's appropriate for Pecosin. Last summer, we opted out of one that others participated in, because our local ground conditions were such that we just didn't feel that it was warranted. So we do make that decision every time, when a flight is coming, whether, what's actually happening in Pecosin, based on the volume of complaints that Jerry's dealing with and weather and everything else.
Okay.
Should I pass the way up, Deb?
Agree. And as I understand, this is one big misnomer, that they will not spray Plumtree.
No, sir, they don't. You have to do a separate EA for that, and that's something that takes, so to speak.
Right, it's basically federal lands, and they won't spray it.
About 10 years to get to do craning, the different applications and stuff. Yes, sir.
Okay.
They do not.
Do you have a question?
I did earlier, same concern that Tracy had brought up, just wondered if it was the same chemicals as before and if anything had been done, but I think y'all pretty well took care of that.
And they have their own entomologist, own loading team, and they work with their, actually, Air Force reserve guard.
Before I retired, I worked at Langley, and I made the point to go talk to the entomologist. And he told, he assured me that there's absolutely no chance that anybody's going to be harmed by this. And they advertise so far in advance for the beekeepers.
Correct.
There's, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the benefits far outweigh the risk, because I can remember when I first moved here, there were months when you didn't go outside.
That's right.
Especially since I moved in, they came after me.
Well, two quick things on your comment there.
You blood.
That's it?
Yeah.
Two quick comments on your comments. I agree, I think the benefits outweigh the bad stuff, but I also remember what all the Air Force told me about Agent Orange, so just want to bring that up, too.
Well, you're talking about a totally different animal there.
We advertise on local TV channels and let people know, hey, we are going to spray. And we usually give them the week up, because these planes, if it's weather-related, they can go from one spot, if it's raining Pecosin, they can go to Cranny Island and spray, then they can come back to Newport News. So they have capabilities of moving around based upon weather. They use DIF systems, so they can cut the sprayers off and on. It's a whole lot quicker, it's more efficient, save more money. But we do do that, we, you know, we put out, if there's any beekeepers, we try to get to the beekeepers and let them know, hey, we're going to have a spray flight, anybody can call. So we do, we feel that we do everything we can.
You do.
To let people know.
You do a great, you do a great job, and just so we're all on the same page, because he was a beekeeper, as I recall, he said the only thing he had to do was turn a sprinkler on his beehive.
Right. And that's a tricky situation, you turn them on too long, they stay in, then they die. So it's, you know, then there's always diseases that get in beehives and stuff. So there's other things that, it's not always, just because you find a dead bee, doesn't mean it's necessarily chemical, you know, it could be, you know, a disease that got into the hive, it could have been that kept them in too long. So it's a lot of things, it's just, and we've actually sprayed before, and we put out die cards to see how the chemicals fall and to be able to test it. I put out, the big thing was, it's killing dragonflies, it's killing things. We've actually put out, I put out white sheets so you could see that the bugs never found dragonflies. Matter of fact, you can always find dragonflies after the spray flight. So I don't think that's an issue.
As I recall.
There's always going to be an issue with some people, and I get that part, but.
I really studied this, but as I recall, that the time of the flight is based on them not being airborne.
Right, and this then, they have to fly before it gets dark, because they're not capable of flying. There's companies out there that can actually fly.
At night.
Red and do it at night, but these guys have to go in, use it about 4:30, and they have to be on the ground when it gets dark.
Okay.
This is just a sign, and I was just curious, and you might have said this, is this the first time we've had to sign a whole harmless agreement?
Hmm.
Yes. In the old days, our agreement was one page long, and there was no application.
Well, in the old days, they probably didn't have one, they just flew over anyway.
Loyes.
Loyes.
And this may change next year, after, this is the first draft of this new system that has to go on. Hampton, Gulf County, Gulf County has already filled theirs out and submitted theirs, and we basically copied, you know, all of their, you know, kind of the wording and stuff, you know, how they did change the acres and stuff like that. So I don't think, and as far as I know, Hampton, up until a couple weeks ago, Hampton was not going to do it Newport News. Not to say that they haven't yet, but at the time, we were going to try to go as a peninsula mosquito control association and file it as a group, but since so many people are opting out, we all decided to do it individually. So we could try to get in and continue the same program that we've had since 50. It's just, this is the way we have to do it if we want to get things. And if we don't do it and we don't get in, people are still going to get to see the planes fly in, but they're just going to be trying to land.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an application for aerial spraying through the Civil Military Innovative Readiness Training Support for Fiscal Years 2013 and 14 with, and I apologize for these clerical, I usually called Judy ahead of time, but I was on my way back to Florida today and didn't have time. In Attachment A, with the italicized print, while IRT support has, I think that's been, first "been" is supposed to be struck, so it reads "has not been provided."
Is that correct?
I'm trying to find.
Attachment A, second page, I'm sorry, under Item Four, where it says, "While IRT support has been not been," I think that "been" is supposed to be deleted.
The first one.
So it reads, "It has not been provided."
Has not been provided in the past. I think it's what it's, yes, you're correct.
Yes, that's true.
All right, motion made. Seconded.
Who's seconded?
Any questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Comments of the city manager?
I do not have any, sir.
All right. Andy, Councilman Southall.
None to my mind.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Look at them, they're all after a record meeting. Councilman Bernal.
Well, I'll break the chain. I was happy to see a couple of Boy Scouts here this evening, completing some of their requirements for various marriage badges, so delighted to see them taking the opportunity to come and see the council in action.
Okay. Councilman Green.
Just one thing, I'd like to remind everybody, the Food Bank tomorrow at the municipal, Old Municipal Building, from 10 to 2, and the Pecosin Exchange Club is hosting it this time.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment, please?
Sure.
I'd like to congratulate all the city employees on their awards, and to publicly apologize for not being at their award ceremony. I signed up to be there, and then I was not, and I sent them a card to that effect, but I'd give my congratulations to all of them, they certainly earned those awards.
Okay. Councilman Ayer.
I just want to jump in, up where Bud was there. I was fortunate to be at that luncheon, and to get to see some of those folks, they're the unsung heroes, really the backbone of the city, that are in the limelight up front and center, but still carry the weight of the city on their shoulders and do such a great job, it was good to see some of those guys. And some of those guys, I had no idea had been with the city as long as they had, it's just an amazing amount of time, so I really enjoyed it.
Okay. And nobody's going to disagree, I think I've made my views of the employees here tonight a couple different times, they'd be guys and gals. Right, Vicki?
That's right.
Okay. I'd like to bring out the thank you, the public thank you that the city received from the parish thrift shop in support of the food pantry, and I'd like to pass along my personal thanks to you, Buddy, for participating in that, Randy Wheeler, and Judy, for helping us put it together for the city to refill the food bank. What a great public service that the city did for a need that was identified to us. Let's see, I think that's all I have this evening, which is a good thing. So without further ado, I think we have a closed session, and that closed session is pursuant to Section 2.2, Act 3711, A3 and A7 of the Code of Virginia, as amended to discuss the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, and this disposition of publicly held real property, i.e. Amory's Wharf and Park Street, in consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation dealing with Pecosin comments. The motion made and seconded, and we go to closed session.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to zero.